Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by your local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Harvey L. Hall.
It's my pleasure to call to order the City Council Meeting of January the 6th, 2016, and ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson. Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
At this time, I would like us all to stand for the invocation by Rabbi Shlinger of Shabbat of Bakersfield, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Gabby Zaragoza, 4th grade student at Heritage Christian Academy.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, leaders of the City of Bakersfield, Happy New Year. May it be a year of health and happiness and security for all of us here in the City of Bakersfield and throughout the United States of America and throughout the world. A prayer, communal prayer. May he who blessed our Fathers, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob; our Mothers, Sarah, Rebecca, Rachel, and Leah; may they bless this entire city, all those who occupy themselves faithfully with communal affairs. May the Holy One bless be he, give them their reward, send blessing and success to all their endeavors. Together, let us say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you, City Councilmembers, for having me.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Madam Clerk, next item, please. Before we proceed, I request that all cellular telephones and communication devices be silenced. Pursuant to City Council policy, council members are prohibited from sending or receiving electronic communications during the meeting, and that we request the same from our audience. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the City Council chambers. Also, please be courteous in the use of any still cameras and video equipment. Audience applause is allowed during the presentation portion of the meeting, but is not permissible at any other time during the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. I'd like to recognize this evening the Freedom Middle School History Class that have joined us to receive the opportunity to learn about city government, and they're here, the students are here with their parents tonight, and we appreciate all of you being here, and we hope that this will be a very informative educational opportunity for all of you to learn about what we do up here. Madam Clerk, next item.
Mayor, under Presentations, for a presentation of a proclamation to a representative of the American Institute of Architects declaring January 22nd through January 29th Architectural Awareness Week.
My good friend Aaron Resnick has usually done this presentation, and so I'm honored that I have the President of the American Institute of Architects Local Chapter here with me, and Aaron's going to watch over me to make sure that I treat you efficiently and accordingly. You know, it's very well documented in our community that the people who design and help us so that we can build very many outstanding structures in our community, and that's all made possible through the outstanding work of our local architecture community. And so tonight, I'm here to give them special recognition. Whereas architecture influences the daily lives of all Bakersfield residents through the definition and enhancement of the areas in which we work, play, and live, and whereas more than forty licensed architects present, practice in the City of Bakersfield and are entrusted by the State of California to protect the public health, safety, and welfare through awareness and understanding of sustainability and renewable resources, utilization of green products and environmentally friendly goods, indoor air quality, accessibility for people with disabilities, earthquake and structural safety, responsible growth and historical preservation, energy conservation, housing for the homeless, and a consistent response to the relationship between nature and the built environment, and whereas Bakersfield architects have helped create the unique visual character of our city and county through their innovative and responsive designs of public and private spaces while working with local officials, service organizations, and community groups to maintain and improve the quality of our life and our community. Now therefore, I, Harvey L. Hall, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim January the 22nd through January the 29th, 2016 as Architectural Awareness Week in our city, and urge all citizens to be aware of local architecture, local architectural design awards, programs, and the local architects who have helped shape and build our natural environment. It's dated at Bakersfield, California, the 6th day of January 2016, and signed by Mayor Harvey L. Hall. I'd like to introduce you now to Mandy Freeland.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for this. It's an honor to be the President of our local AIA Golden Empire Chapter, and just to represent all of the architects in our county. I'm lucky enough to represent us at the state level as well in our endeavors, and it's truly an honor. Thank you very much.
Item 5, Public Statements.
At this time, we will receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, fifteen minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please provide the copy to the City Clerk, who will then provide the necessary copies to the City Council. If you are here to speak on Consent Calendar Hearings 9A, B, and C, or Hearing Item 10A, B, and C, this is not the time for you to speak. Members of the audience are asked to avoid engaging in any behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. Please do not criticize or ampute the mayor, City Council, or any member of the staff or the audience. The City Council is very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the City Council cannot take action when an item is not on the agenda. The City Council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Mayor, we have only one speaker this evening, Robert Brayley regarding 24th Street.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name is Robert Brayley, and I am here to speak about the 24th Street project. The original cost estimate for this project was around $29 million. It is now $69 million, an increase of 137%, which is just disgusting. It's my understanding that the city now intends to use the $40 million the county contributed to the Centennial Project to build the 24th Street project, robbing Peter to pay Paul. The effect of this will be to add $40 million to the amount that will be needed to finance the Centennial Project costing many millions more over thirty-three years. The traffic volume projections you have been given to justify 24th Street have been proven to be grossly inaccurate and overestimated by a full 44% by the most recent KernCog traffic study for 24th and 23rd. In a recent court filing, the city said it takes six to eight minutes to travel from Oak Street East to B Street. I have traveled 23rd and 24th frequently each week to reach the Fairfax area. The last six months, I have timed various distances many, many times in both directions. Traveling east on 24th from Oak, regardless of the time of day or traffic conditions, heavy or light, it takes about one minute to reach B Street. From Oak Street to M Street, traveling east on 24th and 23rd, if the lights are more or less synchronized with just slight slowdowns, it takes about four minutes. If the lights are well synchronized, it takes about three minutes. But the light at F Street is almost never synchronized with Oak, so the time to M Street is about four minutes. Traveling west on 23rd Street with properly synchronized lights, it takes about the same three minutes from M to Oak. If the lights are off just a little, the time is four minutes. The fact, traveling, in fact, traveling east from Oak Street, I can reach Fairfax consistently in eight minutes or less, the same amount of time your staff says it takes to reach B Street from Oak. These times are consistent every trip. Needles to stay if the lights are not properly synchronized, it takes longer. Just how much improvement do you expect to gain over one minute between Oak Street and B Street and three to four minutes between M and Oak at a cost of $69 million? I don't know where your staff is getting the travel times they are giving you, but they are nowhere near accurate. Draw your own conclusions. I suggest each of you drive these distances and time them yourselves to see. I cannot imagine why you want to spend $69 million of our money when you can't possibly improve on what you have now. Put that money into the Golden State 204 Hagaman Project, and you will save us all $69 million. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor, under Appointment, 7A, one appointment to the Planning Commission due to the resignation of Dustin Dodgen, Ward 3, whose term expires April 30, 2017. Three applications for appointment have been received from Brandon Hawkins, Ricardo Perez, and Oscar Rudnick.
Councilmember Weir, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first thank all the applicants that did apply. I had a chance to speak with each one of them, it was a very positive conversation, and I'm happy tonight to nominate Oscar Rudnick as the Planning Commissioner for Ward 3.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Vice Mayor Hanson absent.
I know that Mr. Rudnick is in the audience this evening. I want to commend you for offering your application and a willingness to serve the Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar, Items 8A through 8AA for approval. A staff member random was received regarding Item 8H, transmitting a corrected Exhibit C.
Councilmember Weir, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member wish to abstain from any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, does any council member wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, I would move the Consent Calendar, Items 8A through 8AA for approval.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Vice Mayor Hanson absent.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 9, Consent Calendar Public Hearings, Items 9A through 9C for approval.
For those of you that might be in the audience wishing to speak on this item, I want to inform you that both of these Consent Calendar Hearings will be held over until the January 20th meeting, and you will then have the opportunity to speak. It's now time for the Consent Calendar Hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under Consent Calendar Hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of the meeting. At this time, I'll open the open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 9A, 9B, and 9C, and ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on any of these hearing Seeing none, now I will ask if any council member wishes to have any of these items removed from the Consent Calendar Hearing, Calendar. Seeing none, at this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 9A is closed, and 9B and 9C will remain open and continued to the January 20th, 26th meeting. Councilmember Weir, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move staff's recommendation on Item 9A, B, and C.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Vice Mayor Hanson absent.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearings.
Before I open the public hearing, I wish to state the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed fifteen minutes. It is fifteen minutes for all speakers. Therefore, it is important that you identify yourself and make your statement quickly so that others may speak. We will hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first, then we will hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there is testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal period. You will notice a clock on the wall behind me which indicates fifteen minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself, and at fourteen minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of fifteen minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up and to quickly end your statement. You may pose questions during your statement, but they will not be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, provide the copies to the City Clerk, and she will then provide the necessary copies to the City Council. Again, please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there is an approval by the majority of the City Council, there is a strict fifteen-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to the staff recommendation. So please be precise and do not repeat the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Mayor, Item 10A, is a public hearing to consider resolution ordering the vacation of a portion of the public utility easement located within tract 6448, Unit 8, Lot 19.
Mr. Fidler, please.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the developer for tract 6448 has requested the vacation of one foot of an existing ten-foot public utility easement, which would remain a nine-foot public utility easement in order to accommodate a full five-foot width side-yard setback. Staff recommends adoption of this resolution.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will ask now if there are persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this item and return to council for comment and action. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I move staff's recommendation on Item 10A.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Vice Mayor Hanson absent.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Item B is a public hearing to consider resolution ordering the vacation of the public utility easement located at 5151 Newtonson Drive.
I want to advise those of you that are present that may want to speak tonight on this item, that this item also will be continued to January the 20th. So you can reserve your comments for the 20th meeting, or you can speak tonight. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation.
Honorable Mayor, this item is not going to be continued.
Okay, all right. So, seeing no one present who wishes to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation, other persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will now return to council for comment and action. Comment from Councilmember Parlier. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Vice Mayor Hanson absent.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, Mayor, is a public hearing to consider general plan amendment zone change number 13-0417. Damahaski Consulting Services, representing 4Js &amp; R LLC, the property owner, has applied for a general plan amendment and zone change on 86.2 acres located at the northwest corner of South H and Hosking Avenue with State Highway 99 to the west and Berkshire Road to the north.
Mr. McIsaac, please.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, the staff is still completing late comments received regarding the environmental impact report, and because of that, we are recommending that the public hearing be left open and continued to your meeting of January 20th.
Again, I will say that if you wish to make comment tonight, you can, but this item will be held open and provide you the opportunity to speak on January the 20th. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will ask if there are persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will now continue this hearing until January the 20th. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor and Council Statements.
Do we have any council statements? Councilmember Maxwell.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I would just like to ask, one of my constituents wanted to know as far as the traffic, or it's not traffic, but the roads condition study that we're doing, is that going to include alleys?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, at this point, it does not, I believe it only covers all of our local collector and arterial streets.
Is there somebody internally that could take a look at our alleys and give us an idea of what condition they're in and what sort of repairs they all need?
Definitely, our staff can do an evaluation of the alleys.
Okay, because they're, being in Ward 2, and I'm sure a few people in the other wards, Mr. Parlier and Mr. Rivera, would be interested in knowing, you know, a little bit more about what the condition are in our alleys, because all of us are in older sections that have lots of alleys. So I appreciate that very much, and that's all ahead.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would like to recognize you once again, Mayor, for having the very, very special birthday yesterday. You are very appreciated in our city, and you look quite well for the number of years you've been around, very well, actually. Yes, and also, our Keep Bakersfield Beautiful group does an amazing work for our city, mainly volunteers, which we certainly appreciate, all of our volunteers. I understand that each January, they have a retreat, and it's going to be this Saturday to select a new chairman and kind of lay out what the plan should be for the year, this present year of 2016. When the committee was first organized, I'm remembering that after the retreat, there was a kind of a review, a presentation to the council to just bring us up to date and for the benefit of the council members in the community to go over what the plan is. And I would like to suggest that we start doing that again, perhaps to introduce the new chairman and perhaps the committee people, they could be present at the meeting to give them some quick recognition, but also then by either a staff member or the new chairman to just go over what has been accomplished through the past year and then what the plans are for this present year. So I think that would certainly be interesting to me and to all of us and just a benefit to the community. So thank you and Happy New Year to all of us, all of us. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sullivan, I think that's an excellent suggestion for having a year in review for the council, and I'll see that that's put in place. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo Dido's from my colleague regarding your birthday, and I'm sure all of us up here, we're happy to celebrate your birthday back in the caucus room, and again, congratulations. I want to thank the Bakersfield Police Department for being announced as the current Council of Governments recipient for the Richard A. Maxwell Public Safety Award, and this is for community outreach and reducing response times. So, good job, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment regarding the amphitheater at the Park at Riverwalk, the naming rights, Bright House, again, is helping support the activities there by buying the naming rights, and we appreciate their support. So thank you, Bright House, and Happy New Year to all.
I have one mayor's statement that I would like to make. As you may recall, back in June, I brought to the council's attention for approval in concept of development of a new Bakersfield book, and I just want to say that the response continues to be outstanding, and we presently have eighteen local businesses that have signed on to be sponsors of the book, and we're continuing to work with the development, and if there are persons or businesses out there that want to be a part of our new Bakersfield book, then I encourage you to call the mayor's office, speak to my assistant, Keitha Turner, and she'll put you in contact with the right people to engage your interest. If there are no further comments, we stand adjourned.